We call the meeting to order. Are we on? Okay, we call the meeting. Welcome, everybody. We have everybody here. Deb Glenns, our board member, tonight is at the Minnesota School Board Association Platform Meeting, so that's why she's not here. And we need her there to represent us in the School Board Association, so. And we now also have Cheryl. So, we have, our agenda's in front of us, and it looks like we have one addition and question out. So I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. Okay. The District 741 is proud of, we have congratulations and thanks go out to Mike Hanson, Kala Eimer, for organizing a group of community members who spent many hours filling cracks on our tennis courts. Additional helpers were Martha Sorensen, Kathy Omsheid, Diane Dutcher, Jackie Campbell, and Karen Berg. Thank you very much for those. I'm sure that was exciting. But it's one of the things that's nice to get done for all of us. Then, number two is middle school students, faculty, and staff who participated in the middle school, middle school community rake yard cleanup day on October 15th. There were 27 yards raked and leaves bagged, plus the elementary and the secondary school grounds were raked and cleaned. During the morning, there were 242 people involved in this project, and a total of 628 work hours were logged. That is equal to over 15, 40-hour work weeks for one person. The Rose Center coordinated, the sign up, and the middle school provided the manpower. So thank you to all of those also. We are now open for public comment, and public comment for anybody that wants to speak, we need you at the microphone here. So, others that are presenting, we do it now at the microphone. So, in business items, there's public comment also after every business item, and we need you at the microphone also. That's so our friends and, and members of the community can hear you at home. So, any public comments at all? Okay, we'll go to number seven. Approve and correct minutes from October 28, 2014 Regular Board Meeting.
How do we approve the minutes?
Okay, we have a motion by Cheryl to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a second by Kala. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay, passed. We now are on consent agenda. Review and consider approval of the winter sports assignments, wrestling junior high, and Dominic?
Plato.
Plato, okay. Does it?
There's some ignoring the main voices, we also wanted to see what they're doing.
Okay, so I think that's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
We have a motion by Mark.
Second.
A second by Kala. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay, now we're to business items. Remember, for everybody, we need you down to the microphone if you want to speak on any of these items. In addition to that, I want to just do a reminder to all the board here, we all have to sign some documents after tonight, and so you can't run out right away. So, we have it all organized, so it should be said. Okay, number one. Review and consider approval of our audit for 2013-14 school year. So, Mr. Hoppin, welcome. Thank you. And if you can come to the microphone, that'd be great. I know that's the most exciting thing for you, right? Okay, the school district audit for 2013-14, on page two is the auditor's report. Runs from page two to page four. It sets out what our purpose and function is, and the opinion that we ended up expressing on the school district, which was unqualified. On the next section, if you'll go to page eight. I'm sorry, back to page five. The financial highlights of the district on a district-wide basis are the net position of the school district for the year increased by $328,867. The overall revenues of all the funds were $11,135,446, while overall expenditures were The general fund revenues this year were $9,481,338, compared to $9,407,925 last year. So the general fund had an overall increase of $73,413. The general fund unassigned fund balance increased by $107,000, and the amount of indebtedness paid off this year was $645,000. On page eight, the district-wide statements, that section explains the two types of financial statements that are in this report. One is the district-wide, which looks at the school district more like it was a private enterprise. It combines everything together in one fund. The net position of the school district is basically if you take the difference between the district's assets and liabilities. And then the fund financial statements, which will come later, are the historical-based statements, which break off the individual major and non-major funds of the school district. On page nine is a quick summary that shows the net position, net assets of the school district in Table A1 compared to 2013. As you can see, the net assets for '14 are $5,671,996, compared to $5,343,000 last year. On page 10, it shows the revenues and the expenses of the school district by category for 2014 and 2013. Page 12, on Tables A3 and A4, shows a pie graph breakdown of where the sources and, sources of revenues came from, and where their expenditures work. Page 13 shows a breakdown of the cost of services, and then the net cost of services for the two years. For instance, food service, the total cost of services, and then in the net cost of services categories is after the related charges for services. Page 13, the fund balance analysis begins on the bottom. On page 14, again, the revenues and expenditures are shown by fund. On page 15, it shows the school district's enrollment information for the last five years. If we go over to page 17, the statement of net position, this provides a more detailed breakdown on the assets and the liabilities of the school district for the current and prior year. As you can see, the total district assets this year were $12,807,000, compared to $12,964,000 last year. But the related district's debt dropped from $6,220,000 last year, down to $5,476,000 this year. On page 18 shows the statement of activities, which is the revenues and expenses of the school district combined on a district-wide basis. And beginning on page 19 is the general fund balance sheet, or the fund balance sheets of the district. The general fund in the first column, cash and investments totaled $932,186. This compares to $45,281 of cash and investments last year. Down at the bottom, you'll notice the, in the fund balances, the unreserved unassigned fund balance shows $254,841. Last year at this time, the balance was $147,210. So you had a favorable increase of $107,631 in your unassigned fund balance. The general fund also, just a note, includes $89,690 of your trust fund money. The restricted fund balance in the general fund is $167,660 this year. That compares to $196,371 last year. The reserve fund balance decreased $28,711. The $26,934 of the general fund balance is listed as non-spendable. This represents prepaid expenses and inventory applicable to the next fiscal year. The total general fund balance is $526,433, compared to $453,019 last year. So, again, the general fund balance increased favorably by $73,414. Last year, the general fund balance decreased by $339,000, and the year prior to that fiscal year, 2012, it decreased $437,000. Actually, the last increase you had in the general fund prior to this year was June 30 of 2009, when you had a $42,000 increase. So it's, it's a good trend to see this year. Just for comparison, the general fund balance represents approximately 5.5% of your general fund expenditures, which is basically seven, seven-tenths of one month's of expenses. Last year, your general fund balance covered about six-tenths of a month's expenses. Two years ago, it only covered, two years ago, your balance would have covered one month's of expenses. The debt service fund, the second column over, cash and investments of $596,576, but total assets of $958,300, liabilities of $778,413, leaving a fund balance of $179,590. The third column, the other non-major funds, this consists of the Food Service and Community Service Fund. The combined fund balance here is $192,525, compared to $216,965. And the breakdown on these funds will be later in the report. You want to make a note that actually the detail will be on Pages 48 and 49. The total governmental funds then, you had total assets of $3,445,299, compared to $3,110,383 last year. And again, your overall fund balance under the governmental funds is $898,548, compared to $942,393 last year. On page 21, this is a statement of revenues and expenditures for the individual fund balances. In the general fund, revenues were $9,481,338, compared to $9,6,664 last year. This is a $474,674 increase, or 5.27%. Expenditures were $9,407,925. Last year, they were $9,346,981. So you have a $60,944 increase in expenditures, or 0.65%. And again, revenues exceeded expenditures by $73,413. The district's total payroll for the year was $6,65,048, compared to $6,76,970 last year. So you had a $11,922 drop in payroll. The debt service fund had revenues of $737,696 this year, with expenditures of $870,131, with an additional $39,617 of income from additional bond refunding proceeds. So the excess of revenues over expenditures in the debt service fund this year were $92,818, leaving you with the general fund, with a fund balance of $179,590. On the other non-major funds, again, this is a Food Service and Community Service Fund. Revenues were $862,807, expenditures of $887,246. So you had excess of expenditures over revenues of $24,439, leaving an ending fund balance of $192,527. The details for the non-major funds, again, for your reference is on Page 49. And there was no activity, again, this year in the construction fund. These total governmental funds this year, the taxes and state revenues were $9,889,523, compared to $9,594,091 last year. That's a $295,432 increase, or 3.07%. Local and county source revenues increased $33,087 from last year to $762,254. Federal revenues again dropped this year by $27,893, down to $430,064. Overall total revenues were up $300,626 from last year. Total revenues, total expenditures, all funds again, were $11,165,302, compared to $11,70,744 last year. This is a $94,558 increase, or 0.85%. Page 23, for the general fund, this, this report shows the actual amounts. The first column shows the original budget that the school district adopted. The second column shows the final budget the school district adopted. Third column is the actual amounts, and the final column shows the variance for the year. So the, in summary there, the revenues were over final budget by $93,084, and expenditures were under budget by $53,387. So you had a favorable general fund variance this year of $146,471. Pages 24 through 41 contain the footnotes that accompany the financial statements. Page 33, just draw your attention to the capital assets for the school district for the year. It shows the beginning assets, the additions we made this year. The additions mainly were the, yeah, I have to refer those to tell you what. Basically, the additions that we capitalized this year consist of the north parking lot, the high school lockers, and the auditorium lighting. And they came to $55,408. Footnotes number five and six address the outstanding, standing indebtedness of the school district. So footnote five on the top of page 34 shows the total debt of the district at $4,550,227, inclusive of the bond refunding you did. Note B, or part B of note five, shows the debt service requirements for the next five years of the school district on interest and principal. On page 35, under D, it shows the beginning debt of the district, additions that were made, retirements and payments, and what the balance was at the end of June. Page 36, note seven, this provides a detailed breakdown of the fund balances, the portions that are non-spendable, restricted for, and committed or unassigned. Most of the rest of the footnotes have to provide coverage, detail in the retirement plans, and other post-deployment benefits of the school district. I won't touch on those. Beginning on page 46. More detailed breakdown, for instance, on page 46 shows the general fund, a comparison of assets and liabilities in detail with last year. Page 47 shows a comparison of revenues and expenditures of the general fund for the current and prior year. Page 48 shows the balance sheet of the Food Service and Community Service Fund for the current and prior year. The law on page 49 shows a breakdown of revenues for the two years. Page 50 covers the debt service fund, balance sheet. 51 shows revenues and expenditures, as does 52 and 53. Beginning on page 54, running from page 54 to 56 are the state required compliance reports. Page 54 is a state report. Page 55 is a federal compliance report. Page 57 is the auditor's results of those reports, which basically found no significant material findings. Oh, and then on 58, we did find two findings, which are basically common to a school district this size. The first one is, has to do, is the school district does not have adequate segregation of duties due to the size of the staff. There's a duplication of efforts. The second finding is the fact that the school district also relies on us as auditors to help assist in the preparation of financial statements. Neither one, which is odd, based on the school district's size, and many school districts in the state follow similar, similar procedures, but auditing standards, finals to be, need to be listed as findings, so that's why they're in here. The Student Activities Fund begins on page 61, and runs through page 67. The only findings we had on the Student Activity Fund, there are a number of student funds that have a combined element of benefiting the students, but also covering some of the school's expenses. So, we need to question whether they should be a Student Activity Fund, or they should be moved under the control of the school district. And that would include the Elementary Tech Club, the Elementary Media Club, the Middle School Student Club, and the High School Media Club. It has no effect on the financial statements. Page 68, 69 is the, called the UFR's compliance report. This report gets, our final numbers are sent in and matched up with the Department of Education. And so the first column shows what our audit numbers were, the second column shows what the state UFR's numbers were, and the third column would be if there were any discrepancies, which were not. That comprises my audit report. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you may. Had some questions when you started, but you answered them all in the report.
Well, that's good.
You did well. Anybody have any thoughts or comments? Mr. Hoo, I think you did a good job.
I think the budget's going to the right end. Considering we lost quite a few students last year, excited that we've made some gains.
Okay, I think we could entertain a motion to approve that.
Tell me a question.
Any questions from the public? Anybody? Okay. Motion by Lou. Second by Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Al, do you want to add anything to the board?
Sure.
Just so the board is aware, this is the last year that Al will be doing our, our audit for us. We're very grateful for the time he spent with us and the help that he's given us for doing the audit. We very much appreciate that. Al, I just wanted to thank you, because I won't get the chance to do it next year.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. Okay, we now are going to move to review and consider approval of resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general election. So, any, anything go with it, or we just, I read the data, I'm sure everybody else did too. It's just recognizing what to place, correct?
Yeah, just need to approve it.
Okay, any questions on this from the public? Okay, then I think we could entertain a motion to approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes.
Any votes? Individual vote of the resolution? So, there's a resolution, so a vote on.
Want to do a vote on? Okay.
We're pressing a motion.
Yeah. Yes, I can do it. That would be true.
Motion by David. Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Okay, what's that?
All right, Kala? Aye. Mark?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, second is review and consider approval of resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district special election. They have a motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Kala. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public?
All right, Mark?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Kala? Aye.
The number one and number two are the two that we need to have signature by the board to agree with. One hundred, two hundred and three. Have two hundred and three.
Okay, review and consider approval of resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district's clerk to perform other election-related duties.
This would fall within the same categories for elections.
Okay, so I have a motion by David.
Second.
A second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Comments from the public? Then we're back to you.
Dave?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Kala?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passed. Okay, next, number five. Review and consider approval of resolution providing for sale of general obligations, school building bonds.
Mark?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Kellah?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Okay, next, number five, review and consider approval of resolution providing for sale of general obligations, school building bonds, governing, um, and obligating the district to be bound by and to use provisions of Minnesota statute, section one twenty-six C, point five five, to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds.
Nice job.
Welcome, Judy.
Thank you. Congratulations on passing question one. I know that's bigger to find some funds for some critical projects in the district. And give you some additional funds for next year and going forward, so that will be very helpful, I know, to retain those students. So I'm going to highlight some information in the pre-sale report, which is just passing out right now, and this just gives you some information going into the bond sale, which we're going to try to get done really quickly and take advantage of some nice low interest rates that currently exist in the municipal bond market. So I'll turn to the first page and just point out a couple of things on the executive, starting at the executive summary. We will be issuing $2,030,000 in general obligations, school building bonds, as authorized by your voters in the general election on November fourth. And the purposes really just are reiterating what the voters had included in their ballot question. So all of those projects are listed just as they were in question number one of the ballot. Um, you'll notice that we, in the term call features section, we are planning to issue these bonds for just slightly over ten years. When we had two questions that we were considering, we had planned on a fifteen-year term, but all along we had discussed the possibility of shortening that term, should we be able to still make the, um, tax, estimated tax impact amounts that we told the voters as part of question one. So with the ten-year term, we still feel really confident that we'll make those numbers, and I'll show you that on a chart within this document also. So we are, um, scheduling a small maturity, um, in 2016. It's pretty much a wraparound bond issue, just like we talked about through the process, but we are getting premium bids, and I'm going to explain that to you in just a couple of minutes. And the premium amount has to be deposited into your debt service fund by law, so we might as well use that to pay off some of the bond maturities a little earlier. And that was the final change that I made yesterday after kind of taking a look at what our recent bids are looking like. So, um, you'll notice that these bonds, um, then, the bonds maturing after February first, 2024 and later, so there's two maturities that will be callable. And we likely would call those bonds at that point in time because we should be able to refinance them or refund them at a lower interest rate. So we do have a couple of maturities that will be subject to call, uh, starting February first of 2023. The last thing on that page then just mentions that because the district is issuing.
Can we ask questions where you go? Okay, so you just said that we were going to have calls, and, um, based upon refinancing a lower interest rate, is that what you believe is coming? Lower interest rates is what we have today?
Okay, um, at the eight-year point, certainly you should be able to refinance those because then they'll be shorter maturities, they'll only go out one or two years. Yeah, so generally we see eight to ten-year calls, that's kind of what the market likes to see right now. Um, so this is kind of at the short end. We wanted to capture as much principal as we could without jeopardizing the number of bids and interest rate we might get. So the eight-year call, I think at least will give us a decent size refunding and allow us to capture some lower interest rates at that point in time. Then that last, um, item on page one just describes the fact that because you're issuing less than $10 million in tax exempt debt during this calendar year, and these will close still in calendar of 2014, these bonds will be designated as what's called bank-qualified, and that allows banks to bid on the bonds and take advantage of some, um, uh, interest, uh, interest, uh, advantages for them. So they get some income tax breaks, I should say, um, for that. So that helps because hopefully you'll get more bids and hopefully we'll get lower bids too, and so it's nice to have them issued at bank-qualified. On page two then, you'll notice that again, um, we are including in the resolution the information that allows you to participate in the state credit enhancement program. There's no charge to participate in this program, but the state then will guarantee your debt. And then it'll automatically go out with, um, higher state credit enhancement ratings, so again, that helps you with more bids, lower interest rates, and it's nice to have that state guarantee. The rating process is something that we'll go through again, and so your underlying rating is currently an A2, and again, with that double A2 through the state credit enhancement program, um, then I'd like to move down to method of sale and placement. We will go through the competitive bid process, like we have with other refunding bond issues, and when we were doing cash flow borrowing for the district, we always prefer a competitive bid process, so that's what we'll do again. And then you'll notice the description of the premium pricing structure. And, um, again, recently we've been getting lots of premium bids, which means that the underwriters are providing bids that, um, give you a dollar amount over the par amount of your bonds. Because those have to be deposited in the debt service fund and only, can only be used to pay off your debt, that's why we scheduled that small maturity in 2016, so that we can pay off some of the bonds a little bit more quickly and again, save some interest cost to your taxpayers. If we don't get a premium bid, or if the low bidder or winning bidder, it doesn't offer us a premium of that size, we reserve the right to modify that structure. And so it's possible that that premium amount, or that first principal payment in 2016 will be lower, if we don't get the amount of premium that we think we might. So we'll adjust that on the day of the sale, depending upon what the winning bid is, but we'll likely have some sort of principal payment in 2016, which will be good. So, um, page three then, um, there's no other debt that we can refund at this point in time, but we always monitor that for each of our school district clients. And then there's some references to continuing disclosure, some SEC requirements, arbitrage monitoring, and then a listing of the other service providers that are participating with us in the issuance of the bonds. So the bond attorney is Knutsom Flynn and Dees, and he prepared the resolutions that you're considering tonight. The paying agent will be Bond Trust Services Corporation. Um, you're required to have a paying agent on your bonds if you're participating in the state credit enhancement program. And then we're using Moody's again as the rating agency. On page four then, we list kind of the next steps and the timing related to bond issue, so tonight is the pre-sale review by the school board. We plan to distribute the official statement very quickly, so that should go out next Monday. We scheduled the conference call now with the rating agency, and that's next Tuesday, the eighteenth. Uh, they were a little concerned with Thanksgiving week, uh, that we tried to get it in a little bit more quickly, so that'll work great. And Bob is experienced now with going through that process a couple of times, so I know he'll do a great job again, and hopefully we'll get the rating affirmed by the, uh, rating agency. We'll take bids then at noon on December second, and we'll be calling Bob with the results, and then we will present the results to you at your board meeting that evening. We're planning to close on December twenty-second, so that'll be a nice Christmas present for the school district, have some money to do the projects, and, uh, that will be the, the end of the process then.
So when do the bidders actually get their information, distribution of official statement? Is that when it's open to the bidders?
Yeah, they'll, they can see the, um, preliminary official statements when we first post those, and then they start taking a lot closer look at the transaction about a week beforehand. So we like to have the rating, so this will sell on, um, Tuesday, so we really like to have the rating assigned by the Friday before, because kind of the end of that week is when they're making their decisions and sharpening their pencils and trying to figure out what, you know, what they're thinking going into the next week.
Mm-hmm. The only reason I ask is, um, I went through your website and looked at all the bids that you had standing out there.
Yeah.
And I noticed that the ones that had lots of people bidding were quite a bit less in interest, what you call the TIC.
True interest cost.
Yeah, um, and our true interest was estimated at like two point four. And the range of them, and they were cities and all that, were all the way from two to two point seven four, but I noticed that the ones that were higher didn't have very many bidders, it was only one or two, and it looked like you have primary key bidders.
We do.
Um, so there were like six of them maybe?
Sure.
On the lowest bids, there were lots of them. So, because we're planning this so tight around Thanksgiving, are we eliminating the ability to have more bidders?
I don't think so. I think, I think we'll be okay, because we'll get the rating now assigned early enough, and there's still lots of demand for municipal bonds. So we're starting to see the rates creep up a little bit again. They continue to go down throughout the summer and a little bit through the fall, and now with, just within the last couple of weeks, they're starting to creep up a little bit again. And everybody's been thinking they were going to go up for the last four, year and a half, and they've stayed nice and low and even come down a little bit, but they are starting to creep up again. So I think it's best to get them issued as, as soon as we can, and this is about as quick as we.
Well, the other association that looked to me like was that, um, when you get down to the metro, like you had, uh, something in Ramsey.
Okay.
Okay, that came in at two percent. Um, something in Emily came in at two point seven six, and.
So, yeah, so that depends on the length of the bond issue, the underlying credit rating, the cities and counties.
But what does the credit rating have to, I've asked you too many questions, but what is there, it's an area that I don't quite understand, but what does the credit rating have anything to do with, when they're all guaranteed by the state?
They're not all guaranteed by the state.
Oh, these are not all guaranteed by the state?
That's correct.
Well, I read one of the city ones, and they, they had, were guaranteed by the states.
Sometimes they are, not always.
I gotcha.
Yep.
So could we fairly assume that the higher interest rates were not guaranteed by the state potentially?
Correct, and they may be longer in length. Some of those, if you look at, on our summary, you can see the, um, length of the maturities, how long the bond issue is, and that definitely factors in. The, uh, because each maturity will get assigned a different interest rate. We average that out, I would only figure out the true interest cost or the true interest rate, but each maturity does have a different rate. And so as we talked about earlier, once we get to eight years out on your bond and those are eligible to be called, the maturities then for the next couple of years are going to have a really low interest rate, hopefully even at that time.
So your assumption would be the ones that didn't have many bidders that ended up with the higher interest rates were maybe accreditation.
Could have been maturities, oh, a number of things.
Number of things.
Could be the length of the maturity, so this is only ten years, some of those might have been only ten years.
It was just obvious to me that they, they had way less bidders. They had one or two bidders, um, as compared to the ones that got really low interest, they had a whole bunch. And then I looked at this around Thanksgiving, I thought, hmm, logical person, right? You're looking at great big companies and they're probably going to take Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, they might be, you're not, you're not right away on Monday, you're on Tuesday, so I think that, that bodes well for you. And again, we just, we're still, um, most of our deals are still getting quite a few bids, so one or two is kind of unusual. We've been still getting quite a few bids.
Hmm, because there was, um, Emily didn't have very many, City of Ramsey had a bunch.
Sure.
Um, uh, City of Tracy had two that, and I just pulled this off your website.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I have to see.
I don't understand, so I was trying to get an association, but I certainly would like to have us have five bidders, and if we happen to have our interest, the TIC at lesser value, we've saved the taxpayers some money.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, um, a couple other things, um, I'm not sure if all of those were competitive bids, and we listed that too.
Don't know, I honestly, I had to read it, I just didn't know for.
Yep, so lots of different factors. I'd have to look at, um, Tracy, some of those may have been ones where we just requested proposals from, perhaps they wanted us to just request proposals from their local leagues, and then maybe they only had a couple.
Yeah, the only association I could come up with was there were lots of bidders on low interest, few bidders on high interest bonds.
Well, generally when you get a lot of bidders, they are going to be pretty competitive and hopefully get you a low rate. That's one of the reasons that we love to do competitive bids, because we want all the competition that we can get. And like I said, in a couple of those cases, depending upon what they were borrowing the money for, how much it was, what the length of it was, and some of the cities, if it's a smaller amount, may want us just to go out for proposals and, um, not go out on the open market and just get a couple proposals from their local leagues. So it kind of depends on what they're.
I also noticed that they were all about the same bidders, they were always the same people, like you had six or seven of them.
Well, Piper Jaffrey for sure has almost always been on Minnesota.
I didn't see them anywhere, as Piper Jaffrey. I saw US Bank, I saw Northland Securities, and I saw Beard.
Beard, for sure.
And a whole bunch.
Yep.
Uh, I'm, but there was only five that you had.
Listed.
That listed there, and Piper Jaffrey wasn't in on any of those.
Yeah, we always get, almost, almost always get Piper Jaffrey on the school district bond issues.
And again, I'm just curious, because I don't understand.
Yeah.
Exactly how that worked, but I was trying to see, to make sure that we're getting the best value for.
Right.
The taxpayers here.
Right.
And the best interest rate, and Thanksgiving to me would seem like, um.
Yeah.
That could be an issue.
Maybe that, that week of Thanksgiving, but I'm hopeful that, that week after Thanksgiving, people aren't going to be business as usual. Thanksgiving week, I think, could be a little.
But what if we're wrong? And what, can we, um, put it out again for the second meeting in December, where they actually have working weeks to work on it?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things. If we notice even going into that week that it's looking like we'll take a bunch of bids, uh, we've got some sales already scheduled for the first, I believe, also. So if things go crazy that day, we certainly could put the brakes on. I could talk to Bob and they could say, you know, we're going to postpone the sale, things are not looking good this week.
Okay, so we're, we're not stuck. We have one bidder come in and interest rates too high, and we have these dates set with the December, we're not stuck.
No, that being said, if we do move forward on the second and take the bids, then it's a little trickier, because, um, generally if you do move forward and take the bids, there'd have to be some pretty extenuating circumstances for you to reject all the bids. So you could, you could choose to reject the bids, but there could be some consequences to doing that. So the best, the best thing to do would be if we can see, you know, we'll get bids on Monday morning, the first, if we're seeing that the market's looking goofy, we certainly could postpone at that point in time.
Just at the end of the day, we need the best deal that we can get.
Yes, and that's what we want to do. So let's look at the schedules that we have so far. So our estimates right now, you can see the sources and uses on page five, and you'll notice in the sources that we are planning on, um, a pretty sizable reoffering, pre, reoffering premium for the size of this bond issue. And again, if we, if the winning bid doesn't end up generating that amount of money, we'll adjust that maturity in 2016. And then you can see the underwriters' discount, which is described a little bit more in the, um, report that I just went through with you. Cost of issuance is five different fees. One is our fee, one is the rating agency fee, so Moody's charges a fee for their service each time, uh, the bond attorney charges a fee as part of the transaction, county certificates, we need to get valuations and that sort of thing, the county charges a fee to give us that information on your behalf, and then paying agent, which again, you're required to have a paying agent if you participate in the state credit enhancement program. So those are the costs that go into the forty thousand dollar estimate for the cost of issuance there. Then we're planning to deposit right about the, at this point in time, right about the amount that we had planned on, and that the amount that was submitted in the review and comment for the estimated cost of all of these projects was right around, uh, that amount, just, I mean, within a few hundred dollars, I believe. So as of right now, this particular situation would result in sufficient cost for those estimated project costs, sufficient financing for those estimated project costs. Now you'll see on page six, our estimate of what the debt service schedule would work like, and at this point in time, you can see we've got that forty-five thousand dollar maturity in the 2016 year, and try to pay off some of that principal right off the bat, assuming we get that size of a premium bid. And then you can see, uh, a few columns over that that amount then would be used for the debt service payments. The first interest payment of eight one, 2015 would be paid entirely by that premium amount, and then a portion of the two one sixteen payment. The reason we chose that principal amount is that it results also in a, uh, levy that's going to be about what we had planned on throughout the referendum campaign. So if you turn to, uh, let's, let's look at the debt service plan in detail quickly. So if you turn to page seven, you're, this is the schedule that we looked at throughout the process, however, this is just based on question one now, since question one is the one that was passed by the voters. And you can see that at this point in time, in the top left-hand column, we're planning on a true interest rate of about two point four percent. So that's kind of in line, I think, with what you were seeing on our website for the five sales that you looked at. And then you can see the debt structure that we just talked about in the middle there, That final column then shows you the tax, resulting tax rate, assuming all of these numbers were to be exactly true. So again, the reason that we chose that level of principal payment in 2016 is that it results in a net levy that is pretty consistent with what the voters were told for question one, it's just the rate would just be a little bit less. And you can see that, one more page before you see the final good news. So look at page eight, which now shows you how the debt structure, this is, this is also a document that we talked, or a part that we talked about quite a bit during the campaign process, during the referendum campaign. And you can see that for the first five years, you're just paying a little bit of interest on the bonds, because that print, that initial principal amount is going to be paid by the premium that the underwriters give you, not by your taxpayers. And then the final five maturities are quite a bit less than what your existing commitments are. So with this plan of 10 years, you'll pay interest for the first five years while you still have existing debt outstanding, and then you're going to pay off the principal very quickly over the next five years, but there will still be a significant step down in that tax rate for your debt, once your existing debt is paid off, once those blue bars go away, you'll just be paying on this $2 million issue when the tax rate is relatively low. So the final schedule then, on page nine, is where you can see the resulting estimated tax impact. And I will get updated values from the county on your overall tax base, they're putting together all your proposed tax statements right now, so they should be able to give me an estimate now of your overall value. So we'll have that updated on day of sale, and then I left the capital projects levy right now at our estimated rate that we have projected all along. This is an annual levy, so we're not issuing any debt or doing anything that we need to update the estimate on that for at any, at this point in time. So then you can see in the final section there, the estimates prior to the bond sale for question one, as compared to the estimates that we provided in the election, are very close, so just slightly lower than what was included in the information that was published during the election. So for example, $100,000 home question one was going to be about $29, and now we're showing $28 annually. So the good news is that we think we can accomplish all of this with a shorter term, lower interest rate, and hopefully just a slightly lower tax impact for the voters in the district. That's what we might achieve on December 2nd. And would December 3rd be better? I don't know, it's, it's hard to say, but I think, you know, with what we've been seeing over the last couple of weeks, I think the sooner that we can get the bonds issued, the better for your taxpayers, just because it looks like rates are starting to creep up a little bit, and that's been everyone's prediction for so long, so.
Okay.
That's everything.
Any questions, did anybody?
And then you have the resolution to authorize the bond sale, which was drafted by Tom Deans, your bond attorney.
I.
Dave?
I.
So if you have any questions on that, that is the resolution, I think you'll take a
Okay. Thank you very much.
If you'd like.
Okay, review and consider approval of resolution establishing procedures for reimbursement
roll call, both then on, on that also.
of certain expenditures for proceeds of the future bond issues or other borrowings.
And you don't need to read the whole thing, but I think you read the introductory information So this is a standard resolution that most districts will approve after the bond that's included in bold on the resolution already.
Those exhibit eight.
Yes. referendum has been passed and before you actually get the proceeds from your bonds.
We have a motion from David to approve the resolution establishing procedures for reimbursement,
So if you have some preliminary expenditures, which districts generally do, your architect probably wants to get paid sometime soon, if you have other kinds of costs going into the bond issuance process, this gives you the ability then to reimburse the district out of bond proceeds for any payments that you've made in advance of that closing date.
or excuse me?
No, the first one, yeah.
Number five.
So there is a form in there, a declaration of intent form, and that is something that Right about that, yeah.
Okay, so motion to approve the resolution according to number five.
would need to be filled out by the district and maintained in a file if you do end up
Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a second from Lou.
reimbursing district funds from bond proceeds.
Any further discussion? Anything from the public?
And if you don't need to, you don't need to use it, but you have it in place.
Okay, nothing from the public.
Yeah, this is precaution, precaution really more than anything else, whether we
Linda, you're, looks like you're on again.
need to do it or not, if we don't do this, then we can't.
Lou?
I have another question on this, you know, when we planned this part of it up and
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Cheryl?
I.
Calla?
we were talking about the roofs and some of the issues we had, we planned them out to
I.
try and extend those roofs out. So we're going to get the money in December.
We will.
And we now are down to four summers. Am I reading that correct? Because the fifth summer disappears because we have the money too early and we have to spend it by five years. So did we just bring forward some of our expenses that we were going to do in year five according to, we talked to the facilities committee, so now we do it in four years and we lose a, a year?
Where you'd have to wait.
It's a little bit project, it's not, hasn't anything to do with you, it has to do with the project. And we talked about not being able to spend, they have to spend the money in a five-year period of time, but we're in the middle of the winter, so we're not going to do a roof till we get to spring or that, but we were trying to push those roofs out for five years and now we just lost a year.
You'd have to wait to issue the bonds then until this spring or summer if you wanted to get one more year out of it, because it's going to go by the closing date on the bonds.
Yeah, and we, we can't afford to wait. I, I'd be more concerned about the interest than I would be about anything else going up. And it means that we need to move it up one year to, to do it or else, or you can talk to the state about that and see how long they're willing to hold it.
Is it, we have to spend it for five years?
Typically they want the money spent within five years.
That's, that's five summers.
And we've got, we're getting it in 14, so summer 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 expires in
fall of 18, so that's five summers.
Yeah, well, then we're okay.
We should be okay.
Then we're, then we're okay, I was thinking that we would get the last payment in December and we were missing a summer in there. Oh, no, it would be, would be based upon the project where we don't actually have any use for the money today. We don't have any architect expense, we don't have any of the other expense.
No.
Our first part of that bond is going to happen anyway, so if we extend, we could lose, use it for an additional summer.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I mean, I'd have to check.
But for five years, maybe, maybe it's okay, it just didn't think about it coming up quite so fast, actually.
One question I have, Jody, is that we do have some things for ECOs for UOL, we think we need to get started on those because we're running on a timeline, particularly for the elementary school. Would we be able to spend some dollars now and get them reimbursed then?
Yeah, those were all part of what was included in this project, yeah.
Yeah, because it's, we're on a really tight timeline for the UOL, and Donnie will be speaking a little bit to that later for the board, but.
That simply offsets postponing anything, so.
Yeah, and, we'll send a second, a question about, and generally, when they do the work for you, you have 30 days to make payment on the bill, so, you know.
Yeah, I think we should be all right, but we just need to get those, at least the ECOs done or we'll get rebates done within our timeframe.
And it certainly doesn't hurt to have this in place, should some of the bills come due before you close, so.
Okay, we are looking, any further questions, anybody? We're looking for another motion?
Someone?
A motion by Cheryl.
Second.
And seconded by Calla. Any further discussion? Comments from the public? Okay. Go on again.
All right, so a few of us.
Hi.
Cheryl?
I.
Calla?
I.
Mark?
I.
Dave?
I.
Okay, passed, thank you very much. Then next will be personnel, review and consider approval to hire Gary Schmidt as maintenance staff member in the custodial unit effective on November 24th, 2014.
This is just replacement for this person that had resigned, and we're just replacing. Person is coming from VD and we're very excited to be able to hire this person.
Oh, move. I have a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Now we're down to informational reports, so elementary school principal first.
Well, at the elementary, we, last, last week had our mass hearing and vision screening and we had a number of volunteers come in and, and we had someone from one of the vision places in town come in and it was kind of a trial by fire for our new school nurse, I think she'd been there eight days, and, and so they got through that and, and we do have some, some rescreens and some catching up to do, but we're plugging along with that. We submitted our celebration school application the day before the deadline and we should find out in December whether we're accepted. If you haven't been to the elementary in a couple of weeks, we have revamped our check-in system. We have a number of badges that are in a box on the front counter, each badge has a number, and any visitor who comes into the school needs to come into the office like we always have been. But instead of just getting that sticker where the sticker just kind of disappears, you have to sign your name, you have to put down the badge number that you take, and as you exit the building, then you have to return that badge with, with your signature. We haven't decided the penalty for taking a badge yet, but we'll figure that out. So we've also done, created badges for everyone who is a substitute pair or teacher in our building each day and they must sign in and out doing the same procedure. We have conferences coming up, we tried something a little different this fall with scheduling conferences, we're trying to streamline things a little bit. Paulie would spend a number of full days scheduling conferences for 400 and some families, students, and so we moved it more to a teacher-centered scheduling, and so notices have been sent out and, and all the conferences have been scheduled. We are considering other options as we move forward, just to continue to streamline things. There are school districts that have online conference scheduling, so we're looking at something like that. Just trying to be proactive. We have our Veterans Day program, which was rescheduled, and that is tomorrow at 2:00 at the high school. The second graders did their program yesterday for others, for students and staff at the elementary, and so kind of did opposite what we normally would do, so you're welcome, certainly welcome to attend that tomorrow at 2:00 at the auditorium. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. We have secondary school principal, Lori.
We have been busy, the, the numerous itches of snow have made this week a little interesting. We had our Veterans Day program, we had our high school program yesterday, although the program went beautifully, the bands and the choir and our, we had a special presentation through the YouTube, if you want to watch it yourself, on the Star Spangled Banner as you have never seen it. It gives the history of the battle where at Valley Forge, of how committed our veterans were to keeping the flag up and what that meant for our country's freedom. And that program went over really well, but Bill Ryan, our main speaker, wasn't able to be there yesterday, but he was able to join us today, and our middle school had the honor of hearing his talk with them, and he shared the gifts that he has been given, the gifts of love, prayer, friendship, and the most important gift of freedom. And he shared that with our students, so it was a very heartfelt program and very beneficial to our students, as well as many of our community members that joined us. Yesterday, we also had about 24 of our students, our principals advisory group went over and helped the Legion serve the Veterans Dinner. Never before have I had to shuttle them, usually we walk over because it's a beautiful day, the snow kind of hindered that a little bit, so I was playing shuttle yesterday. We are getting ready for conferences coming up here in a couple of weeks. Our middle school is a student-led conference and then our high school students meet with their advisors. We are going to be providing some new information at our high school conferences on preparing students for transitioning and looking ahead, what are their goals, and doing some surveys and some different things with the parent and the advisors to looking ahead at what might benefit them as they look into scheduling and, and creating goals for their future. So that's something new. Our eighth graders did take the explore test today, so we hope to get those results back and start sharing that information with them late December, early January, so that'll be important. And the most exciting news is I met Jen Andres and she was getting off the bus today from the Minnesota program that was down in the city, 23 of our students went. They actually sat in the parking lot for an additional half hour on the bus, still talking about their experience. So that was, was fun to see, but they will be here, I've asked them to join us in December at our student meeting so they can share personally their experience of the day, and they were very appreciative of being able to go, so. With that, any questions that you might have? All right.
Thank you very much. Next, our community education directors.
I'll report from up here doing double duty.
We need to pass the microphone up there?
I think we're good. Our winter brochure goes to press this Friday, so look for any new activities and classes. Our PAWS had our first snow day of operation, so we did have PAWS on Monday. We didn't have many kids, but we had PAWS, school age childcare. And Bob wanted me to report on the lunch account, online payment is active, and they've had over $2,700 of business on that so far, so. We're still working through some sign-in issues, you know, passwords and things, but I see more and more revenue coming through each day, so. Any questions for me?
Why don't you report on the numbers you've got in PAWS, it's been increasing correctly?
Yeah, yes, we're over 50 kids, so, yeah.
Good, thank you. Next one, staff development report.
You know, I'll report on Deb's, yeah, she was there, but again, just because of legislative meeting with MSBA platform, she's missing today. We did have our staff development meeting, we did update and talk a little bit about first the fact that question number one passed, and we talked a little bit about the impacts that that will have. We also talked about the fact that we're still going to leave our budget the way it is right now, I'm still not willing to move budgets around until we get a better grip on where our reserve fund will be, so we're going to leave the budget the way, yes, we won't change it, at least at this time. We also talked about staff recognition with our possibility of not going into resource training and solutions next year, and that's certainly been my recommendation to the board. We missed our timeline last year, I won't...
Our winter brochure goes to press this Friday, so look for any new activities and classes. Our Paws had our first snow day of operation, so we did have Paws on Monday. We didn't have many kids, but we had Paws, school age childcare. And Bob wanted me to report on the lunch account. Online payment is active, and they've had over twenty-seven hundred dollars of business on that so far, so. We're still working through some sign-in issues, you know, with passwords and things, but I see more and more revenue coming through each day, so. Any questions for me?
Why don't you report on the numbers you've got in Paws, it's been increasing correctly?
Yeah, yes, we're over fifty kids, so, yeah.
Thank you. Next one, staff development report.
You know, I'll report on, yeah, she was there, but again, just because of legislative meeting with MSBA platform, she's missing today. We did have our staff development meeting, we did update and talk a little bit about, first, the fact that question number one passed, and we talked a little bit about the impacts that that will have. We also talked about the fact that we're still gonna leave our budget the way it is right now, I'm still not willing to move budgets around until we get a better grip on where our reserve fund will be. So we're gonna leave the budget the way, yes, we won't change it, at least at this time. We also talked about staff recognition with our possibility of not going into resource training and solutions next year, and that's certainly been my recommendation to the board. I missed our timeline last year, I won't miss it this year. But a couple of things that we will miss is being able to use their programs to recognize our support staff and our teaching staff. So part, a great part of the discussion there was how are we going to continue to recognize both our support staff and our teaching staff in the future if we are not with resource training and solutions. Talked about some of the staff development, staff development that had taken place, Maria Rasmussen had done just a fantastic presentation, and Dave, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, I just, I know that you watched it.
She just piggybacked on some close reading strategies that we're working on at the elementary. Fourth grade teachers also presented and did a wonderful job, so it's always nice to have our experts within our staff come in and, and work, so.
So we also talked about upcoming staff development days, and principals are working on that with their staff at this time. They're also looking at updating their, the district-wide staff development website, it's getting a little outdated, and we started putting so much information on it, that it's getting a little cumbersome to move around and find the things that we want, so we're going to start working on that. So that we do want to become a completely paperless committee, but we need to start looking at updating that website, there's just a lot of things that we need to do. And the other thing that we talked about is upcoming sessions for staff development, maybe breakout sessions like we've done in the past, staff, I believe, upon that very beneficial, but they can help pick the breakout sessions that they attend and what's offered. Those were the main things. We've also simplified our forum for applying for staff development funds. So that was kind of it for the staff development committee.
Okay, next, building and ground supervisor, aye. As Bob mentioned, we're in contact with XL Energy and Yule Company, see when we get our ECOs. I talked to Bob Sernia, Joe Sernia, Don Yule, and he is looking at getting us a proposal to get our ECOs done for the elementary school, because by, oh, from what XL Energy said, we should have that in the works and done by December eighteenth, which we are now looking at, trying to get a, if we can't get it done, he's looking at extending the process, so we're not sure. We'll know more tomorrow. High school, I think the ECOs are scheduled for February, being the whole process took longer, with high school, we have more time, but. In other words, it's gonna be nice to get another maintenance person on it. We are sick and tired of pushing this already, and most of you probably are. We're also looking at getting quotes for Dave's office, principal's office, and a new tile, and hopefully getting it done at Christmas time, maybe Christmas break. Other than that, I'm not sure.
Just, I'm hoping you're ready, I think I can remember. What license has you hired?
Special.
Special?
Any questions? So what does that mean, the special license?
Yes.
Special license is first step to getting your all your boiler licenses, now you will have to work on boilers with, say, a first class or chief, and he's got a year in order, then he can take the second class. You get special, second class, first class, then chiefs. By rights, all we need is a's. The special, he can actually go in the boiler and work it, or run the boiler, but he cannot tear it apart or anything until he gets his second class license.
He only need one chief, one staff, didn't he?
Correct, yeah. Good.
So he's pretty much doing an internship.
Pretty much, though, yeah. A year of that, then he can go for the second class. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Donnie. Mr. Hewitt, you're on.
Back to me. Well, I gotta tell you, I'm already tired of snow. Would not have believed that I would have had to call a snow day already this early in, in November, but there we are. Just so that the community is aware, the first makeup day that's in the calendar is January second, that's a Friday, coming back from break. Before I make a decision, our recommendation to the board that we use that day as a makeup day, I'd like to wait and see what's gonna happen. Certainly, if we get another snow day between now and then, you'll hear my recommendation, that certainly we'll need to use that January second. It's just not a real good day to come back from the break on a Friday and have one day of school before the weekend, but if it continues to go down the road it is so far, I cannot guarantee it to anybody that we will not be using that day. Secondly, I would just absolutely like to thank the community for approving question number one. It's a real benefit to us, and I can't be happier. Now, a lot of work will start for us to use those dollars the most efficient and effective way, so that we get the best bang for the buck. Question two, money that hadn't was not approved. For question number one, I had intended, regardless of if anything passed or didn't pass, of reconvening the facilities committee, I'm going to do that, possibly to set up another meeting before Thanksgiving. I'm hoping, if I can find a day that'll work for the crew, just to talk about the election, to talk about question one passing, to reconfirm what we're looking at. We do have a lot of work to do with our technology committee, we're gonna be meeting on, I think, the eighteenth to start planning. We have a year to kind of plan for the technology levy part of question number one. We want to make sure that we're very well planned, and we use those dollars as wisely as we can, and find the best bang for buck for those two. At the same time, I also think we need to discuss question number two, it did not pass. I'm assuming the board would possibly want another recommendation from the facility committee, but I am looking for the board's input on that one.
Okay. I think we need to, to look at it, and then, maybe information as much as anything.
Well, we need to fill them out, and I, I need to hear what the facility committee's thoughts are right now, and I guess, I assume that the board would also like to hear what their thoughts are, as, you know.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking at doing. Meeting with the technology committee again on, I think, on the eighteenth to discuss the levy and how to get the best bang for the dollars. Potato day, just a reminder, is November twenty-fifth, three o'clock, you are certainly welcome to attend, both schools will be doing it at the same time, so I need to come in, is come in, sit down with the staff, and visit, eat a potato, all right? It's a good exercise, I think it's a good time, I think the staff have enjoyed it. Max is not here today, it's very hard sometimes for Max to take a break during the winter because of, or during the school year because of, all the events are taking place, right now we're between seasons, so he did take a few days off, but he gave me a few things just to mention. The W C C has a meeting formally to approve the addition of the dance team gymnastics, to continue to compete in the West Central Conference, that's a good thing for us. We believe it'll be approved, but we haven't heard one way or another yet. Our fall sports programs are wrapping up with banquets and awards. Get ready to have, on the first, second meeting in December, a lot of products. There will be probably a page for Max, based on some of the success that we've had in our seasons this year, there'll be a lot of products. A reminder of winter sports, haven't started practice yet, they will begin next Monday, so all of our winter sports will now be in session and working. Girls hockey had the first game last night, some of the eighth grade girls basketball have the first game Thursday. Also, we did change the way we did our newsletter this year, our second, at least our second newsletter, we did go with the community on brochure, and we sent, put some articles in there. It is a cost savings to us to do it that way, and at least this year, we're gonna try to see, see how it all shakes out, see what parents may or may not think about it. I'll be anxious to find out if anybody even notices, so we'll see. That's what I got.
We had just a little visit about a survey, too, of people. Should we look into that with the facilities committee?
I think.
I don't think it has, it pertains to that.
Certainly, we're gonna have a lot of discussions, and I think certainly I'll put it in gen together, so those are some options for the facility committee to actually do a survey and see, you know, why the community wasn't in favor of it. I think any information we get at this point is good information, one way or another.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just have two of them, I wasn't here at the last board meeting, but I just wanted to reassure the board that I did last week review the additional September and October bills, and I reviewed the bills from the last meeting and found that to be appropriate for payment, so.
Thank you.
Your approval was kind of quick, so. The other thing is, is that, as, as you know, with the stadium, when we passed that back in August of two thousand and eight, we were kind of the host for the monies coming in and out for the payment of this, of that stadium. So I just wanted to share with the board, I did, I asked Joan just to pull some of that information for me, and basically what we are agreeing is, we are collecting the monies from this group or from FEMA, and then as the bills come in, we extract that money towards whoever needs to be paid. And right now, year to date, we have paid out five hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents, so, and, like I said, as the money comes in, we express it out, so there's really no, it's a wash back and forth, so.
And I think that information showed, Mark, that we've taken in the exact amount that we've, we've spent out.
Dispense, yeah, so, none of the monies besides that twenty-five thousand dollars that we gave, or we allocated to them, is all that we had given them, so.
And then it's all kept in a separate folder, so if anybody wants to come in and see how we pay bills and what we pay and what we receive, we're certainly, you can do that.
Thank you very much. I don't know if it'd be appropriate as such, but we have two new board members elect that are sitting here today, so I have Heidi Riley over there and Randy Kern, welcome. January will come relatively fast, so, and Bob will keep in touch with you about everything, and I'm sure he already has been in touch with you. So, any other?
I guess a reminder about the MSBA conferences, I've sent emails all to everybody, and be verifying things also.
When's the next board meeting, the twenty-fifth?
Which one?
Next board meeting?
Next board meeting is the twenty?
Twenty-eighth, actually.
Twenty-eighth, I think.
Is it the twenty-eighth?
Oh, that's like, that's.
I'll be able to say it.
It's the Friday? No, that's not, twenty-eighth.
It is the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-tenth, yeah.
Okay, because I will not be here.
Okay. Potato, potato.
Huh? Okay, so, we will have the same issue come up as last time, so how do we handle that when we get to actual board meeting?
I guess I would prefer to have a volunteer come in and take a look at those bills.
Is that how we should do it, maybe?
Sure. So.
Well, the only thing is, unless she would have the bills ready for that Friday before.
We can, we can check. I'll tell you what, I'll work with the board on that, I'll either, if we can do it before, Mark can do it, if we can't, then I will talk with volunteer.
Yeah, whatever, doesn't make any difference. Yep, if it's not available, then yeah.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll check it, I prefer to have our board member, Mark, do it, if possible, so we'll see.
Okay, well, you guys work it out, just so when it comes to the board, we're not kind of scrambling.
No.
But we're.
Like last time.
We actually did pretty good, I think, it was a, it was a, it was a nice workaround. Do we have a motion to adjourn? A motion by Lou to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Cheryl? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post say no.
And we found these.